Okay, uh, we'll, uh, kind of change up the agenda, uh, a little bit, uh, on over agenda. And, uh, I'll introduce Ms. Catherine Katie Hardy from Southwest Planning. Uh, she was coming up here for a bag and hold it to give us some information on our meeting plan.
Yes, sir.
So, what were yours?
Thank you. Um, like Mayor said, I'm Katie Hardy and I work with Southwest Arkansas Planning and Development. Um, I'm currently working with the county data to update your hazard mitigation plan. Um, every county has to have one, uh, according to FEMA, it has to be updated every five years. Um, and we've been working on yours for about a year. It takes two years to write the plan. Um, they end up being about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty pages. Um, they have four sections. Um, one is a basic introduction to what the plan is, the required nature of the plan. Um, the second section, um, is a profile of each city within the county. What are your resources? Who provides your electric? Who provides your gas and water and internet, things like that? And then it also gives some geographic location, just a description of geographic where the city is located. Um, the third section is the risk assessment and the vulnerability assessment. So what those are is we look at, um, what structures are in the city that are at risk? If a tornado, if any kind of natural hazard or disaster comes through your town? Um, what's going to be hit? What, um, what kind of condition are your city buildings in? Um, and that, those are kind of ranked by vulnerability. Um, and then the risk assessment is an evaluation of data going back to nineteen fifty all the way through the end of twenty twenty-two, where we look at every occurrence of a natural hazard for the county and then for each individual city. And what that tells us is we look at how much property damage occurred for each hazard? Um, how much, uh, if there was any deaths and any injuries that were reported, things like that. And what that ultimately tells you is what happens the most and what is your most costly hazard that you experience. And the point of mitigation is to overall reduce the risk to life and property. So think of mitigation as pre-threat of a hazard. So it falls under emergency management, um, and there's four phases of emergency management. Mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. So you're probably most familiar with preparedness and response, um, because preparedness comes before the disaster, the disaster hits, and then response happens directly after. Mitigation is what really determines, um, where you as a city and as a county can put, um, grant money to, to strengthen your city so that the damage is less after a disaster. So the reason why FEMA requires this plan is because they have found through experience and through different, um, academic studies, um, that for each dollar you put into mitigation on the front end before a disaster ever happens to strengthen your city, um, to strengthen your resources, you save about six dollars in the response. Um, and so that's really what they do. And that's why they encourage cities and counties to do it, um, so that after a disaster, the response is not costly to you. And hopefully there's less death and hopefully there's less injury and damage to property and crops. Um, and that's another thing the risk assessment covers is any crop damage. Um, the databases we use, we use about five different ones. Um, we use, um, the National Inventory of Dams, we use the National Weather Service, um, uh, we use OSHA, we use, uh, the National Wildfire, um, database. So we, and then there's, there's a few more depending upon the hazard. Um, this plan covers natural hazards, um, and then chemical spill. So this plan covers wildfire, hail, winter storms, thunderstorms, drought, flooding, tornadoes, and dam failure. Um, and earthquakes, if I didn't say that one. Um, most places around here don't have earthquakes, but there, there are a few counties in our district that do. Um, Southwest Planning covers twelve districts, so I end up working on about twelve of these plans, um, throughout various years. So, um, what this means for you is that, um, we are working on your plan. Um, I'm really here to ask what, um, what hazards you're most worried about? And what buildings, um, or critical infrastructure, what roads you're most worried about in the event of, um, any of these natural hazards? And just to kind of tell you about the mitigation writing process. Once this plan is written, we hope to have it done, uh, in December. Uh, once it's done being initially written, it'll be sent out to the state for review. Um, they have the opportunity to send it back to me for any edits that they may want. And then once they approve of the plan, they send it to FEMA who does the same thing. And they have a period of time where they can send it back to me for edits. After FEMA approves of it, I will come back to another one of your city council meetings and ask you to pass a resolution to adopt the plan formally. Um, once the plan is approved by FEMA, you have five years, um, where that plan is valid, um, and you're eligible for federal mitigation funding. You are eligible for state mitigation grant funding without this plan, but you are not eligible for federal. So one of the reasons why we work on this plan is to have, um, every available funding source, um, open to you. So, do you have any questions? Are there any, um, any hazard you're most concerned with? Yes?
Like falling trees are the biggest, I mean, actually they just fall, and I just lay them with the trees themselves.
Okay. Yes, because that would be, it's not necessarily under, it would be what we consider a cascading hazard, because that most often happens after wind damage or thunderstorms or winter storms, right? So when, when FEMA calls a, a hazard, a cascading hazard means one hazard causes another hazard. And so really that can be factored in under various things, it just depends on, uh, which one we, we put it under or which one you see the most, um, trees, trees falling.
The tornadoes would rather be your spread.
Do I have?
Yeah. That railroad crack out here, I think, is our biggest threat.
Yeah, that's what, honestly, that's what most of the cities are saying, because you're worried about, um, train derailment and chemical spills.
Chemical spills.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and that's one of the reasons why the, the county elected to, because chemical spills is like an optional hazard. Um, a standard mitigation plan covers natural hazards, and then the county can say, we want to cover specific hazards beyond. And so they have, because they're also concerned, and we've heard that from most of the cities, that they're concerned about chemical spills, we are including, including that. So we are looking at, the thing with train derailment and chemical spills is that as a county, you're not necessarily the ones in charge of those trucks, right? You're not the ones driving those trucks, um, or putting those.
They'll be the ones called on them. They'll be the ones the fire department is called on.
Right.
To come help take care of it.
Right, exactly. Um, which is why we're covering it. It just gets, so like with a hazard, a natural hazard, we can say like, we're the ones in charge of our buildings, so we're, we can break ground on, on city ground, right? You're the ones that get to determine that. Um, with trucks, you can't necessarily say you can't drive through our town, because it's the county's state.
Right, right.
Right, so we can respond to it in a certain way. And one of the other things, um, so we are including that in this plan. And then, um, the response to that would be covered under the Emergency Operations Plan for your county. And that should be under your, um, Office of Emergency Management. Um, I don't know a whole, whole lot about that plan. I've, I've worked as one as a college student, and that's, that's my best. But mitigation planning is really what I work with. So when we're looking at chemical spill, we're still kind of flushing that out or flushing that out. And what that could look like for covering that plan under, or covering that hazard under mitigation? But what we're looking at right now is, um, what, where are the routes? If we can potentially get listing of routes other than just general observation? And then, um, potentially, like what resources would you need to respond that we can gain before the threat happens? Does that, does that make sense? Okay.
Is the feed mill inside the city limits?
That'd be very towns, because we'd be called in on it all.
That's a bomb waiting to happen.
Oh, yeah, pick them all up like down.
What's the name of the feed mill?
And they've got chemicals down there.
What is that?
Well, they have, I mean, a little mill.
Foster Farms.
Turned off.
Foster Farms.
You have to come in the same people.
I'm just thinking of the net.
So after, after you do the report, you say you'll finish probably next year, what did I base, how did I base it for council?
As a council, um, I have a survey that I'll ask you to fill out tonight. Um, I have a QR code if you want to do it on your phone, if you don't, I have paper copies. I'll take those back with me and the, those responses will be included in the plan. Um, and then, uh, one of the questions that this asks is, um, if you have any interest in being involved, um, and anyone here is welcome to fill out the survey. Um, and what we're looking at is any interest, um, from either city council members or, um, general citizens of the cities. Um, and we'll put together a workshop. So the fourth, sorry, I never told you, the fourth section of the plan is mitigation actions. And those are the strategies, um, that you're going to use and prioritize to, uh, strengthen your resources as a city. And so through that workshop, what we'll do is I'll, I'll put out like basic scenarios of different hazards, and I'll have whoever attends the workshop basically try to write their own mitigation actions. And what I'll do is we'll have a basic planning committee meeting, which is made up of the mayors and, um, different county personnel, it's all from the sheriff's department and the fire department, things like that. And I'll take the results from those workshops to that planning committee meeting, and I'll inform the mayors, like these, this is what your citizens are concerned about, because they'll also get all of that data at that workshop from the risk assessment. So they'll already know what's the most expensive hazard for each city, how often they occur, those kinds of things. Um, so they're, I'm kind of bringing them like citizen data in order to inform their decisions. And then, once that's done, they'll make their decisions and they'll, they'll prioritize the different mitigation actions, which out of those actions, um, tho- those actions will inform the grants that you want to apply for for the next five years. Um, did that answer your question?
Good.
Okay. Anything else? No? You'll also be asked to pass the resolution to adopt the plan once it's, once it's done, but that won't be for a good while yet. We're, we are in the risk assessment, vulnerability assessment phase, which is the longest phase of the plan. Everything else is based around, um, different levels of participation from different things from the survey and planning committee meetings and things like that. But the data collection is what takes the longest. So, any questions? Do y'all have any questions? No? Okay, I'm going to pass out the survey and then.
You want that survey back tonight or can we even back it back?
Um, it'd be best if I can get it back tonight, but if you have a way to scan it in, you can do it that way too.
Yeah, I wish, wish you had it again. Take back the figures.
Okay. If you want to pass that, if you are good, you want to do it on your phone? Who wants a paper copy?
Do we can mail it back to you?
Yes.
The other address under.
There's, there's not an address that I can give you one of my cards.
Okay.
Okay.
What?
We type.
Uh-huh. You can just write in that one. And if you have any other questions, um, that you think of after tonight, please feel free to call. Or email. Yes, absolutely. Would you like more? Oh. Would you like more? Okay. That's all I have. Do y'all have anything for me? Any questions?
We appreciate you coming up.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, be careful going back home, because it's nighttime and deer and the hogs, and they're traveling.
I haven't seen a hog. I've seen some deer and a lot of bunny rabbits.
You don't, you don't see a hog.
Well, I appreciate you all, I appreciate you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything we can do, let us know.
I will, thanks.
All right. Okay. Everybody had a chance to look over, everybody had a chance to look over the agenda? Do I hear a motion to adopt? You approve the agenda? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
That's it.
All right. Okay, the minutes. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes?
Can I motion to approve the minutes?
That's it.
All right. Okay, what do you report?
I have a question. On the profit loss in the general fund. It doesn't pay all the way. Do the first thing about this. On the, uh, it's eight AM, that administration.
Fine, where you at now? Uh. Okay, now what you put in, uh?
The ADM, and expense, under expense?
Yeah.
Is, is that, is that standard administration? Where did we spend eight thousand dollars in January in administration?
Uh. Rob, do you remember any kind of big expenditure? Normally the first year, Rob, we got all of our insurances and all that sort of stuff.
We don't itemize that out before we show insurance?
Do I?
We don't itemize that out before we show, we pay, does insurance add insurance?
No, that's what you do.
Can we, is that possible?
Uh, yeah. This is all.
Can I make a motion? We itemize this out now? I'll make a motion, we itemize that this, every one of these budgets, but now we know exactly what we're spending, where we're spending it. It's hard to get to meeting and nobody knows where we spent the money yet. We just say we spent over eight thousand dollars in administration fees, nobody knows.
You check that, all right. All right, all right. All right, is that it?
On the, uh, feed budget, we had payroll expense of four fifty-nine and twenty-two. And, uh, on the waterworks budget, we have labor costs of twenty-nine eighteen. And then we have another administration expense of three twelve sixty-three. Any idea what those may be?
Not, not exact name, but they're enough. Uh, but, one thing, Rob, each department has its own, uh, income and its, its grid. Uh, so the street department, general fund, all that is on labor cost, and that is on, uh, pencils and papers.
Right.
It's, it's, it's all, it's three times.
Right.
So now then, what?
So we spent three hundred and twelve dollars on pencil and papers?
No, that's, no, let's see, Rob. First, uh, is that on the street fund or?
That's on the waterworks, waterworks.
Uh, three hundred and twelve dollars. Uh, I can't say exactly what it was.
Okay. Over here, back to the general fund. We spent fifteen hundred ninety-two dollars on building grounds. Any, any idea what that was?
No.
Any idea what the twenty-two hundred twenty-nine dollars fifteen cents of firework was?
No.
So you don't know where we spent this money?
Well, I can't recall, because I can't.
This is why I'm asking for itemized budget. When you put this out, and itemize what we spent the money here.
All right.
Because I would expect you to be able to call it out every dime. But we only spent a hundred and thirty-five dollars on parks and recreation. Any idea what that was?
Not really. No, I can't remember it, it's not even this time.
Right. And that's why I want to itemize, so we can see, and we know where we're spending the money here. I really have an issue with this eight thousand dollars in administration. I can't approve this myself, because I want to see what that's there for. That's a lot of money spent in one month on administration fees. I don't think we can tell you what it is. I might get wrong. But we got to get some, we got to get word away on that act. And my job, I have to determine itemize every day, every dime I spend. Can't just go in there and say, well, I spent twelve thousand dollars, I'll even pay you back. I got no words, every dime.
Okay, any other questions? All right, do we hear a motion to approve the budget?
I make a motion to table it to get the information you need. That's it.
All right. Uh, okay, item that we have talked about purchasing, item six, uh, is an injector system for, uh, one wheel, less pump. The cost is about sixty-four hundred sixty-eight dollars, twenty-five cents. We've already, uh, more or less approved doing that, so.
We need to do more or less approval.
Well, let's see, let's say we didn't then, do you?
Let's tell the truth. It hasn't been approved.
It hadn't been approved. We've been talking about it six months ago.
Okay, nobody's approved.
Do I hear a motion to approve the first?
I, wait a minute, is it up for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have three quotes on it?
Rob?
Sir?
There is a whole lot of, uh, work put on the mayor. And the mayor hits his mouth with all that, no matter what else they do. Uh, and I have for the last thirty-plus years, uh, been doing this, and been getting bids on the things that the law requires. So yes, I do have three bids.
Where they at? Can I look at it?
Well, yes, you can. Let's see, this is, uh.
Mr. Mayor, you've been doing it for thirty-four years, I've been doing it for two months. I'm going to do it the way I've been told to take care of business. I'm going to do it the way the people of energy have asked me to take care of business.
Well, I ain't got a problem with that.
Well, you seem like you did it for a second. So this one is two thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars. I don't know whose handwriting this is.
That's the company that, uh.
They come and wrote this on here?
They, it was on there when I got it. That other has an item on there that's added on, it says on there, I don't know what that item is.
One, one says scale two thousand ninety-seven dollars, and the other one's two thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars, and it says nothing besides.
All right, now, the scales is what was added on. The scales, uh.
So this quote doesn't have scales on it?
Yes, it does have scales on it, that's why.
Handwritten by who?
The company that sent the quote.
They handwrote this in two year, in a.
Well, I didn't, I, I, I mean, I can't say who wrote it on there, Rob, but it was on there when I got it.
And this one's handwritten. The scale of two thousand ninety-seven dollars is marked out, and four thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars is handwritten to say.
I don't, I can't, I'm not looking at what you're looking at, I'm not sure.
Right here, the scale was two thousand ninety-seven dollars, and it's marked out with P in, and someone hand wrote in four thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars.
What's the total of the bid?
Uh, six thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars down here. And, I mean, it's hard to say, because it doesn't have a total, this is all handwritten. You have took part of it typed out from the company, but then you add, people, someone's added stuff. So it's hard to say exactly what that is.
Correct.
That won't fly where I'm for, any company that I've ever worked for. And that's just two quotes. Oh, the third one's completely handwritten. I can't vote for that with handwritten quotes, like they all marked through and everything else. That's, that's professional, is the company we're dealing with, the handwriting that's up on there? Anybody want to fit? Because the actual quote itself is not as high as what we're saying we need. It's, it's that what we've added the pencil and pen that makes it that high. You understand where I'm coming from, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I know what you're coming from, Rob.
I make a motion to table the injector pump until we get three solid quotes that aren't handwritten. I'm not at all saying we don't need them. I am saying we need professional quotes. It does not scribble through and stuff added and everything else.
Rob, the what I can say and stand behind is if the bottom line on that were handwritten or typed in or what, I can purchase that item for that price.
Okay.
So. That should be the issue here, so.
So I just need to trust that handwritten quote?
Well, there's nothing that says that everything's got to be typed out.
No, there's nothing that says it's got to be. There's nothing that says it's got to be typed out except that I can't, I say it, I can't accept it. If somebody else wants to, that's fine, but I can't accept that. I mean, because watch this, watch this. Ten thousand dollars is what I just put on there handwritten. Now you're going to ask for ten thousand dollars?
Alright, Rob, if you don't trust the man.
Should I trust you? Have you, have you admitted to lying to me before?
No, yes, yes, I am.
After I caught you, man?
I don't know that you.
After I caught you, man, you admitted to lying to me.
Do I hear a second on this motion table?
I see.
How, how long are we going to carry this, this out?
We're going to do it correctly or we're not going to do it?
Okay.
I asked you last month to get three good quotes. Did I not?
Uh, do I need a point of committee to get these quotes?
Semi-second.
No. Appointed committee to get the quotes?
Yeah.
So you don't have time as mayor to do the job?
No, I don't seem like I'm doing it correctly. So we need someone to do it correctly.
So you don't want to do the job anymore as mayor? Is it not your job?
Is that what I, is that what I said?
I disagree with appointing a committee. I'm asking you to do what we're asking you to do, what we, what you invited them to do.
All for him. Uh. Thank you, Sean.
You're not for.
I didn't say table it. I didn't know what we were voting for.
I'm sure you know what she was voting for. When we were voting, all four was tabled, correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay.
To get three quotes.
To get three quotes. Correct, checked, not handwritten in. That's all I'm asking for, is professionalism.
Alright. Uh, are we ready to move to item seven?
Yeah, item six has been tabled, so we can move to item seven.
Alright. Uh. We have talked about this for later for the sewage discharge fund. Do we hear a motion to do that? To purchase a quote discharge meter?
Do we have any quotes on? Is this a digital meter that will report back to some area or someone actually have to go physically look at it? Look, I'm not understanding, this one's five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. This one's five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. This one's five thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars. We're asking for six thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Five. You're wrong once.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my, my bad, I went the wrong one. So we went with the highest quote.
Uh, I didn't think we did.
Fifty-one seventy-five, fifty-five twenty, and fifty-six eighty-three oh five.
Is that what I'm asking for?
We went with the highest quote.
Well, what you trying to do?
Was there anything different than what the meter?
That's what I'm going to ask, are all of these apples to apples quotes?
Yeah.
So this, this guy's doing the tackle or this guy's doing same thing?
Same quality pump per meter.
It shouldn't be the same, same meter.
One nine seven. One nine seven.
No. Pulsar Ultra Four Controller, this is a Pulsar Ultra Five flow monitor.
About the same thing.
Maybe, maybe a different model or something?
One third stop. No, one third stop.
Both of the cheaper ones are Ultra Fours and this is Ultra Five. But still. If they're the same thing, how come we're not going with the cheaper one?
What company was that Ultra Five from?
Lucky Pump Well and Service, Mississippi.
Mississippi.
You got one out of Hot Springs, one out of Percy.
Maybe the travel. Are they going to install it also or is that?
Yeah. These are, these are always installed. Well, it is on this one, it's apples to apples. It doesn't say it on there. But if they're apples to apple quotes, books said they was, and it comes with the install.
Yeah, that all install. Cause they have to install them and then they have to calculate them.
Right.
Uh, in place, in other words.
So I get my question, why we went with the highest one instead of the cheapest one?
I just felt more comfortable with the company already.
Who's that?
About company, out of state company instead of one that's in state?
I just felt more comfortable talking to the people. We act like they're more knowledgeable.
Yeah, that's when you travel time, send a technician every night. He's planning two days at least, maybe even more than that. That's actually not bad, fourteen hundred dollars for two days technician.
Other word of Mississippi is the word.
So when there's a problem with this system, do we got to wait on these people from Mississippi to come work on it? Or we could have somebody out of Hot Springs come work on it?
Or we want to.
I kind of like the idea of having somebody closer. But I don't know if that's something that will put us down, put us in a bad situation, or if it's just something that they'd like to have. It's just required by the state.
It's, it's required by the state that we have some uh method of telling them how much we do charge out upon them. And as I said before, what we've been doing in the past is just a wild guess. And you know, the other part is not going to continue to accept it. So I'm trying to get prepared for when they say, I won't answer.
Okay. I, I understand that, that's coming. I understand that. My next question is, do we have?
On the back of the one from Mississippi, it says the price does not include insulation.
Uh-oh, no, that uh uh does not ask to, read that again.
Does it include insulation and hardware?
Hardware, does not include extra hardware.
Hardware means it will be built an additional to the.
Number three, it says price does not include insulation.
Well, now does it have an installation charge on the front end?
It don't say insulation, it says labor and mileage charge.
Okay, okay, that's insulation. Now on the back, I think what they're talking about is if they have to have anything extra.
Oh, that doesn't matter, we shouldn't even be using that company, that's the highest one and the closest one to us.
Well, twenty's wrong.
That's, that's my opinion. I like the guy at Hot Springs, he's the mid-range price.
Uh.
But Percy, Percy Arkansas, I don't know exactly where's that at?
Just right outside of Hot Springs.
Is it?
Where is?
Hot Springs, right.
Is that S and S quote?
Yes.
The state's.
No, he works in Hope.
He's in Hope all the time. And I think we went with the cheapest, the cheapest quote myself.
What's that for a price?
Five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Yes, five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. I make a motion that we use S and S plumbing for this.
Okay, uh, let's, let's get this first, let's make a motion if we do it. Then we have to pick who we're going to do it with.
Well, now the way you got this drawn up is a motion by whoever to appropriate this amount of money.
Well, you have it up to look above it there.
The mayor asked the council for authorization. Complete purchase. The purchase, okay.
So first thing, are we going to purchase one, any, we decide where we're going to purchase it?
Make a motion with purchase.
I'll second that motion.
All for him.
Now, we need to talk about where the funds are coming from. I don't think we should use up every bit of Arca fund we have. If we didn't have Arca, where would we get it from?
We wouldn't buy it.
Well, then we don't need it.
Rob, the Arca funds are far this guy's thing. And we do have Arca fund available.
Mm-hmm, we have other funds available too, though. Do we not?
Well, why spend our money when we've got, uh, Arca money to spend?
Why spend eight thousand dollars in administration fees and I know where they're at?
Well, what's, what are we doing on, on this appropriating the price, are we going to table that too?
That Arca money. I guess that's how you say it, Arca. Where, what, what does that stand for?
American recovery, something other grand, I don't know exactly, stolen you memory. It's, it's the recovery money that the government give to all sewerage counties throughout the United States too.
And we don't like COVID money.
Yeah, that's what we're pretty basic of where it is, COVID money, and we blow it through it left and right.
Well, no, it's not COVID money.
Well, it's a recovery, get the.
Recovery for what, you mean recovery after COVID? They, they want some COVID money to start with. We didn't get to that, but they was COVID money to start with. Now then, this Arca money is after that.
We have to spend it. We have to spend it.
Yeah, we got a certain timeline, we not forgotten that one timeline, that is, to spend it or give it back.
Okay, we got to use it or give it back.
And, and I'd like to know the date we have to give it back. I mean, no doubt, we got to spend it before then. But it just seemed like we're blowing through, we're asking for Arca money for everything we got going on. What will we do if we didn't have Arca?
Why, why not spend it wrong?
Well, there may be other things we can spend it on.
Like what?
Anything. Making the city prettier.
City what?
Making the city prettier, spend it on getting some of the trash out.
Certain things that you can spend it on.
No, there's not either, no, there's not either.
But this is, this is a need though, isn't it?
If this is a need, what would we do if we didn't have Arca money? But I spend money at home.
What I'm saying is the sewage discharge meter, we need that, as you're saying.
Oh, no, it's not, it's not, it's not, but it's going to be eventually.
Right.
And we were trying to get ahead of the game.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so.
And I don't disagree with that.
Right.
But I do disagree with just blowing through this Arca money on anything we can because it's more convenient to use it, because it's just out there and we're going to use it all up real quick.
I'm not saying, point, this, to me, this is a need, for me, it's a need. I'm not sure. To me, this is a need we need to do. I don't think we just throwing it away. This is a need, I believe. This is my question.
I'm not saying it's not a need.
Right.
But.
I mean, it's, it's about, uh, the mayor that we're required to have.
Right.
No, we're not required to have it either.
We've done have it.
We've been reporting how much we just charged, we're not required by anybody right now to have it. We feel like we may be someday required, so we're trying to get in front of it.
I'm not with it, but we can vote on it.
I mean, I'm going to have question.
I know that we vote on the five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars from S and S Plumbing Company out. Is that one out of Percy or Hot Springs?
That's Percy.
Which one we going to Percy?
That's the one I like.
That's one, okay, I vote that we voted on the S and S Plumbing Company out of Percy Arkansas for five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll second it.
All for him. All is tied with three votes. Okay. Now, and this next one, this is a joke. I advertised for a four-inch trash pump that would push water three thousand feet with a thirty-foot lift. Uh, each company that accepted this to give me a quote had that's, had that same information. Now then, here's a quote from WS Pumps. Uh, Hot Springs for thirty-one hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Here's a quote from uh Jack Tanner. Had the same information to, to bid on. His bid is fifty-nine thousand. His bid is fifty-nine thousand seven, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. And then I've got a quote from, uh, Rick's Plumbing out of Hot Springs for sixty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So we need to be sure that that company is on board with what's going on. No, a three-thousand-dollar one because something's not right there. There is something's not square there. Those other two companies are reputable companies, I know. I'm not saying this one.
They may have a different name brand motor or pump.
Not fifty thousand dollars.
That's their opinion, it might be.
Uh, there's something wrong with that. I'm like, like motion, we table that and we square that away.
I had to exit off already.
I second it. I'm sorry.
Uh, I don't even look at him. We know that.
You gotta look at him.
I don't get it. It's quite a bit.
Yeah, there's, there's something wrong here.
I'd really have him sitting out here on the parking lot and look at him and say, "Okay." Why is yours so much better than that one sitting right there?
He misunderstood some information. We're gonna get hurt on that, but I'm saying.
Did somebody second that?
Maurice seconded it, I think.
I, I voted for it. I'll second it.
Oh, I second it then. We table, we, we just, no, we just skipped that one. We just exited off of, moved to proceed.
I knew, but I wanted to see it anyway.
Uh, that's why I ask for three quotes a lot of times. You get that first one, you think, "Oh, that ain't that bad. Just three thousand dollars for a pump." You get the other two, and you realize there's a mistake somewhere.
All right, now then, the last item, we're not the last item, but the next item out of ten, nine. Uh... We're collecting a lot of rainwater into our sewer system. What do y'all wanna do about it? What, what can we do about it? What are options? First thing is you gotta find out where it's coming in. And then, then the, uh, then the correction would be simple. I mean, you see it, there's the hole fixing it.
Can, can we tell what section of town it's coming, or is it all over, or is it a particular section?
I'm gonna say it's all over.
What about, what about smoke in the system?
Yeah, did we ever do the smoke test?
Smoke in the system, send a camera of it.
Do I?
Send a camera through it. That's very expensive.
Oh, yeah, we could before the county, I'm sure, go through all the system. Uh, smoking would be the easiest and more direct. I mean, see smoke coming up out of the ground or where you know there's a hole.
I was saying some clarity. So when it says the, uh, city is collecting a lot of storm water, what's storm water like?
Storm water is regular rainwater, and we're paying to, we pay to process the sewer water. We have to pay per gallon, per gallon to process it. When you add storm water to it, now we're paying for storm water and sewer water. So our rate to go, goes way up higher to process all this water.
I'm just saying, storm water is getting to the sewer system.
Right, right. And we don't wanna pay to process storm water. We don't wanna pay to process sewer water.
We're diluting our sewer water with rainwater.
Right.
But we're having to pay to get rid of all of it.
Right.
So who would know? I wanna know what to look for. Who would?
Well, that's what we're talking about, put the smoke, smoke in the system.
Smoke in the system, okay.
Put smoke into the sewer system, and wherever you have a leak is gonna come up.
It'll be coming up around people's houses and everything.
Did we not already do the smoke test? We talked about it.
We talked about it. What does the smoke test cost?
That I can't tell you, Rob. It depends on how much smoke you gotta have.
Right. That's what they're gonna ask you, what you wear footage you use.
But how much smoke we gonna use, how much you gonna cough, that would be just a wild guess.
We probably need to get some information on that. I mean, it's something we're gonna have to do.
Who even does that, a club of plumbing? Who, who would do the smoke test?
We would do it.
I'm asking, um, 'cause I don't know. So, uh, so customers actually could be dealing, could be coming from customers' houses too, maybe?
We, what, what a smoke test is, Maurice, is, uh... You get right here and find a manhole, and you block it off where water can come through. And then down a line, you, uh, blow smoke into that line, and that smoke will come out somewhere.
Well, the reason I was asking was, uh, over on, um... You know where, uh, Dooley Lovehouse is, and there's his brother's house, right next to it, that's what Sanders live in there. There's a big ol' hole down there. Um, oh, you look down there, there's a pipe that's open.
Okay.
Hey, that might take care of it.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Yeah, it's big ol' pipe there. It's a hole, it's a big ol' hole about this big, yeah.
That, that's, that's one of the problems.
Okay.
And that's where it's at.
Uh, you know where Mama Love live?
Yeah.
And then, uh, if you keep going over, it says, it's four, five, and then the, um... What's the name of that thing?
I'm trying to remember which.
Okay, if you're gonna have Dooley, to have the Dooley Love's house on, soon as you go to the, the next block, that house that's over there, just before you get to the end of the street, it's over there, uh... Well, look Sister Grace here. What is it? Is it Fourth Street?
Probably Fourth. You're talking about going?
Well, it's fourth and Vine. It's fourth and Vine.
Number three streets go just away.
Yeah, it's, uh...
Going right past Dooley's, huh?
Go, go past Dooley. As soon as you get to stop sign, the very next block to your, to your left, there's a big ol' hole there, and there's a pipe that's open. You can look down and you can see it.
We'll, we'll, we'll take care of that a bit here. But that's where the problem is, I'm telling you.
Okay.
And if you know any more. Well, that's a booker know.
That's a portion of the right.
Well, that's what I was asking, 'cause it kinda sounded, that's why.
Back, uh, back in eighty, back in eighty-five, when our sewer system was built, Mr. John Hawkins was the engineer, and that's one of the very first things he told me about. He said, "Watch backyards, because people will cut a hole in the shoreline to drain the water out of the yard." And we have found that here already. And we fixed a couple of them.
And then now in, uh, in like, in, in my lot, in my yard, which I have a lot, I don't know what's down there, but there's a, uh... You know, at the six and Vine, at the corner right between our house and the church, there's a big hole there, but you can't see them. I feel them, they're just go right back down, so I don't know. Maybe I check that too.
That might be wrong.
Yeah.
So, well, anyway, though... Uh, did we have a actual motion, Grant? Did you make a motion or what?
Make a motion.
We had to track it down, uh, look into the smoking of the system, uh...
Look into it or do it.
Well, we need to correct the problem, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, the way I look at things is if you, if you keep inspecting it, and inspecting it, and inspecting it, you, you're not gonna ever get to it.
If you inspect it a lot.
Yeah, but you're not gonna ever get to it.
So can you, can you fix these places that he's talking about, and then check if, can you tell if you're doing less, or you just have to smoke it just like?
A month and a half, two months later, you'll find out, well.
Yes, we got smoke.
Where could it be?
Yeah.
Processing that water.
I mean, if you don't do it, you're gonna have to smoke the entire system.
I just wish we had some kind of, some kind of number amount, some kind of dollar amount.
I can't, I can't give you one.
What if it's a hundred thousand dollars to do this?
Well, we'd have to just go halfway, yeah.
I mean, I mean, we'll, we'll be saving, I mean, we've got to spend money to save money.
That's right.
And so I would be all for, I mean, yeah, I agree with what Rob said, we'd, we'd be good to know how much it's gonna cost, if, if there's any way to get a estimate, but...
We can, I mean, these get some information before we just say, "Yeah, we're gonna do this," and, and we don't have a clue what we're spending. I wouldn't have a million dollars to do it.
And then we end up with a big bill that we're not expecting. I mean, I'd rather get just a, as good as we can estimate, and hopefully come in under.
Why do you have to have to smoke it? I mean, you said you're gonna do it yourselves. So what do you have to get? What do you have to buy?
Maybe make, make a bag of your car, little smoke bombs about that long, put a five hundred thousand square foot of smoke. I think I bought twenty of them. I think it was forty-eight bucks.
Is that much bomb?
Now, I don't know that that would work.
It's a little under a hundred thousand there.
Just, just to throw this out.
I don't know if that would even work for what we need to do.
Just to throw this out there, we use a smoke gun at work to check the tightness on the chicken house or the way the air, to be able to see the air.
Airflow.
Yeah. You know, you can't see air, but with the smoke, you can see where it's going, so you can make a change in your setup, and it'll throw that air a different place, and you can see it. And all it is, is you can get them at Home Depot or at Walmart. It's a little thing, it was like a handheld shop, uh, one of the handheld vacuum cleaners. Uh, Glade, I believe, puts it out, and it's actually for, uh, mosquito repellent. Go out there, bring on barbecue, and hit the button, and it heats up, and you... And it, but what you do is you put baby oil in. I mean, I can sit here and fire that thing up and get it about twice, and I can feel this whole room open to smoke.
It'll kill mosquitoes?
Sure. Well, if you put the mosquito repellent in there, it will.
So we'd be doing two things. We'd be getting all the mosquito drop system as well as finding over.
When we get there with the holes, we're gonna put Grant running around in the trucks, pray the town for mosquitoes.
We're gonna be riding around with it. But that thing, it, it, it'll throw a lot of smoke. Now, I don't know how much smoke is required to be able to do this test. Like I say, it will make a lot of smoke. And I mean, I can demonstrate it for you.
Can you really, can't you?
Oh, yeah, just pour baby oil in.
No, I think, I think, you can direct it, you can like inject it. That's the only thing, is 'cause it's like being injected.
I can shoot it. I can, when I, it'll shoot out there, kinda like a flamethrower almost, but I don't know if it'd go from me to Randy.
But it'd go halfway. I mean, 'cause if you, say, you look there at the manhole, and you just spray it down, and it goes, and it sits there. So we've got to be able to go down.
Wait, 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 Rob. Uh, we have got, we built it, uh, a piece of plywood the size of those manholes. And in the middle of it, we got about, I think it's a ten-inch opening. Then we've got a little pump that, uh, actually what the pump is for is, is when you, a man is down in one of them wells, you just drop this hole down in there and pump fresh air. Well, we use it to pump fuel. So that's the way we could extend it on down.
So we've done this before?
Well, we've done it, uh, just, we've tried.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we made an attempt to do this.
We made an attempt to see if what our thought would work, and how did it work out for us.
Worked out good. So then we're just looking at the expense of it, is just getting the smoke.
The labor. To get the smoke.
The smoke, and then, uh, labor involved in having whoever they have.
We already got the labor.
Was one person enough, or two?
You gotta do, gotta take two.
You gotta do one doing smoke, one riding around looking around. You'll probably get the funk off. My house on fire at the sewer!
Be sure to flip that down as administration expenses charges, so.
Do one now.
Be sure to write that down as the administration.
You just mentioned building.
We don't know that. It's a good idea.
And see what happens with it, and see if it possibly will work. And if it does, I mean, hey, I can bring that home with me, or we'll, we got a couple in the office.
Uh, now...
Uh, I think it's buildable hours on Haskins' house, because we said you wanna keep active things, so like if you're doing it, you get paid, I mean, you, or labor for you. There was, so if there's any question, we'll have it covered, so.
Do what now?
Well, the, the question was, Rob was saying, he wants to know where the things were going, so I think the council should agree. If somebody does it, they're gonna do it.
If we had to pay an outside contractor, we need to document it, yes. If we had to pay someone, if Grant, if we had to pay Grant to come with you.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Booker said he had enough people to do it.
Well, would that mean to build a lounge for his people extra, or what?
No, they're already, well, they're paying him, they're already paid.
Well, I mean, he might have to use equipment and stuff, is what I'm saying. He might have to charge for equipment and things.
We've got that equipment.
Okay. Mr. Booker said he has it.
All right, just, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Hey, you wanna know if we wanna do it or not? Sure, let's do it.
I mean, I wanna know how, how y'all want to do it. So, so anyway, though, we're gonna smoke test it, and that's good enough for me. Uh, now then, Rob, what was these pellets that you were talking about?
Uh, McMaster car smoke pellets. I can't remember how many cubic foot it is exactly. It looks like a little firecracker about that long. And it's about that big round, got a fuse on it. I use it in ductwork, four-eighties, four-eighties ductwork. Uh, if I've got a leak in a duct somewhere, you know, and I'm losing vacuum on my system, I can like that, throw it in there, close the door, and wherever that leak is, it's verbal, it's a verbal smoke.
That sound like might be the better way to go, Grant.
It might be, if there's...
You can call them in different places.
This manhole has got pipes coming in the bottom, maybe more than one coming in, but just drop one of them in there and just put this four fair on it.
It may be a better way to do it.
And you get these at work.
McMaster car?
They're not the hybrid sewer, no.
D I U.
Work.
Really gonna...
See, you got a big bomb, you're like...
If you buy it, make sure you make a bill by, you know how much your city is being charged for.
We got some small.
She didn't say try it out, but you're not.
That's what Rob was talking about. Your bomb, make sure we know how much.
And if you purchase them for the city, so that you'll have a high line.
But they can burn, that was, you know, little... What we used to call snaking with kids, well, fire them, light them candle.
Or that, the line of black stuff.
I didn't understand where you're saying, Rob. You said MasterCard.
McMaster car.
Which you burn it, it'd be like...
Kind of like Ranger.
Maybe I am that way.
You know what Ranger is, girl? It's just like Ranger, but it's the opposite, MasterCard.
Oh, okay, okay.
This one here, it puts out, burning time is three minutes, puts out forty thousand cubic foot of smoke. That's a lot of smoke.
I would do them.
Uh, this one is... Mm, seventeen fifty a piece.
That's burning the camera from both sides.
Yeah, you see, that, that's, I mean, I like to go through and find. Oh, I, I, we got to go through it. I don't know how many we would need. There you go.
Y'all need a little bit, I got a bunch of them. I'll take them.
She said, "How's it gonna burn if it's in water?"
Well, you're laying in a grass.
You know what, I'm like, what, what font are we?
I mean, they, they can very easily... So.
Or talk to a string, tie to a string, it's probably down there, it's to be on the string.
It's, and it, and it might burn in water, I don't know.
I'll get you some more information on Booker. When I, I, we got my laptop, I can see it up there.
But it'd be really...
I'm sure you understand.
Halfway or something like that.
It's a lot different screen when I put it on my laptop, I can see multiple things instead of just trying to go through the menu.
Well, we might, we might order a certain amount of them, see how it's gonna do it.
Right, I think.
Since we're here.
That'll be whatever Mr. Booker and...
What, what, what do you think comes in? Say a case?
We bought a case, it was a, I think it was twelve of them. And I seem like it was twelve, I can't remember exactly. It wasn't bad, fifty, sixty bucks.
Well, I mean, twelve, twelve.
I think it was twelve of them, or it was twelve.
I'd love to get started to see what's...
See if it's gonna work enough. And, I mean, that's what I use on all my ductwork and my cyclones and all that kinda stuff. I find leaks almost immediately with them.
Third one we have, what, that's one we have, we got a leak, a smoke emitter.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's about the size of it. And I, I don't know about the volume, they probably don't compete to those, what, what you're talking about, but there's a superior smoke emitter.
Right, see, that's why we like those, 'cause you can get the...
There's some bigger ones there.
Forty thousand square foot of smoke.
It's a lot of smoke.
Yes, it is.
Well, I mean, forty thousand, that's a lot, but... It's, the whole thing gonna be a learning curve.
Right, right.
Because, I mean, how far are we gonna try to push this smoke down that line?
Before you go to the next hole and grab it, and you go this way, or do you go back that way?
I mean, you might, you might put a forty thousand-foot container into three hundred foot line, and then you make a forty thousand-foot line, so.
Right. Right.
Kinda using eight by eight manhole.
It's just gonna be a.
Gonna be just this.
Now, that thing you're talking about, you say it's a combo like a gun.
That thing I've got?
Yeah.
Well, it, it's kinda like a, you know, handheld rechargeable vacuum cleaners that came out years ago?
Yeah.
Just about that, right there. But now they do have these right here, which are smaller units, that you can get, uh, and they, they don't produce as much smoke as what Rob, Rob's do, but they might work better on a short section of line.
Well, I'm looking at the top of the house and says, Grand Bay.
He's gonna hit a button somewhere.
I see him. Didn't they play basketball last weekend or something?
I thought they were the hockey team.
Yeah, I don't know what's happening here. Let me see here, let me get. I just punched down the smoke emitters. You see, you got various sizes over there, then they got small, that's the only we get.
Those are little containers.
With these little pellets.
Yeah.
Pellets. You light them. And they don't throw them, they just, they do throw pretty good smoke.
Well, I mean, you're not looking for a, a long pack of, for a lot of smoke.
Like I say, you know, they don't, they don't create the cubic feet, so what it is, dollars. This, this one here?
One of them.
That pack costs twenty-one dollars.
Six, seven, eight, two.
Ten, ten of that. Well, like I say, they don't, they don't have the volume that.
I, I'm asking, no, what, what, what? Rob, you gonna check on?
Yes, sir.
I will get some information on that. I will, uh, appoint Rob to.
You say it, but then.
Research this smoke.
Ranger?
Oh, is that Ranger?
No, this is McMaster car. They do. I think I'll get the point, uh, yeah, I'll get the point.
There's another one, there's another one right there.
How much smoke does it put out though? I don't wanna, some of these lookers.
It'd be nice if you could get one that you could just reach all the, like, out and just reuse.
All right, Rob, we'll, we'll, we'll appoint a Rob to research that and come up with what you say.
I will do what I can and help you come back to us.
Smoke system, did anybody have a second there or we just?
Uh, Grant's motion.
I mean, that we, yeah, okay, Grant made a motion that we.
To use the test smoke test.
And then I appointed Rob to.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have a second, that we're just appointing Rob?
I'll say it. Be silent.
Okay.
Uh, Rob, you're back with me, is quick as a pike.
I'll get you.
I mean, you know, we can't keep the pushing down the line.
Right.
I mean, whenever we accomplish anything.
Right.
We, we need to do something. Uh, okay. Item ten, our generator out back is uh, shirley shaft off of the water pump, fan went into the radiator and all that sort of stuff, so it's down. We're looking for parts to fix. Now, it's old too. So, you know, back when I was a kid, if you had anything, you could buy parts for it. Nowadays, if it gets twenty years old, well, that's, it's hard to get parts for it. So anyway though, we're looking for parts to fix the eighty K of this generator.
What, what motor's on that?
Forward. Best three.
I was gonna run a diesel, it'd be a company. But uh, tell you what, if I was gonna run a diesel engine, it'd be a company. Of course, that's gonna cost three thousand or four thousand, so that's uh.
I don't know, I was, uh, Generac shot some John Derr engines too. But that one out there has been running. Just slick, slick a button. Only thing, only trouble we've had out of that generator out there, been a generator problem.
I usually was running two on there. How old is that one?
Uh, it was, it was bought one of these uh, one we did to Waterworks, one was that, ninety? Somewhere along there.
You said the sewer was in eighty-five?
Eighty-five, sewer, so it was probably ninety, ninety-five.
It was thirty years old. Thirty-five years old.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's one of them guys, just keep talking, it's kinda like your little honey rabbit.
So can you get the parts for it or you don't know?
We've got, we've got some of the parts, but we're still looking for the, for the parts. Who's doing anchor work? Fred Karinick. Uh, item eleven, just uh, information. We're going to eighteenth, I believe it is, to pick up a big check for the video.
Ten.
Ten, ten, okay, we'll go, we'll go that day too.
Who's going?
What day?
Uh, uh, myself, Rosen, Grant, Shannon, Diana, Joel, uh, uh, Miss Joanna, who Joanna, yeah.
Miss Joel doesn't, Miss Joel doesn't wanna go. She, she's having some health issues. I did talk with her about it, but she said she would like to decline because of her health issues.
Yeah, I knew it'd be kind of a strain, trying to put that far. I know it's a strain on me anymore.
Total, total of seven could go, is that right?
I think it's a seven.
So have limited seat.
They, they approved, that's not, not bring away. Uh, item twelve is something that had been asked sometime back and I didn't have the exact figures. But uh, the city still owes a principal amount on the uh, on the sewer system, we owe sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five cents. Uh, that's to be paid off in twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven. On the uh, water system, we owe two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and seven cents. And that's to be paid off in twenty thirty-eight. The total that the city owes on the water and sewer, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars and sixty-two cents. So anyway though, we're not letting you go debt free. The back hole, uh, Shannon, you asked sometime back about how it's doing. We've spent a little two thousand dollars on it.
Is that a repair or a maintenance upkeep?
It was a repair, mainly on hydraulics.
I thought they fixed that before they brought it?
They fixed a lot of them, but they didn't fix all of them.
Hoses?
Huh, hoses? They, they uh, they replaced the billable ones that the sun had shined on them, but it was badly cracked. But the one down there, the ones that are impossible to get to. Yeah, we had to take the back wheel off today to get the one. So, anyway though, uh.
So we're buying those hoses from, from Ford or we having them made somewhere?
If, if it's one that's makeable, we have it made. Uh, some of them, you know, just got special lens on it. We know we got them back and forth.
Right.
But uh, a lot of them go to an app and get them makeable for us. So uh, anyway though, I don't know if I should have a report, but I'm at the bottom of my page. Any questions?
I'll get a report on this.
No.
I think we just didn't manage. Okay, all right.
A special conference, Brett, we need to hear.
Y'all are reporting, y'all get one.
Okay.
You want?
I didn't know if it was, who, you were gonna talk on this or?
No, 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 that's, that's, that's.
Trust.
Take home and have a little bit. And same else.
Did you have our committee on there for updated report?
Uh, no, we put it on it.
I was just gonna give an update, uh, as far as the Eva, we have already started uh making plans for our next event. Um, our next actual event will be March eighteenth. Uh, it will be a citywide community bingo. Um, the proceeds from that, along with the fifty-fifty split pot, we will use to fund our July fourth celebration uh with the fireworks and stuff, so we're trying to get a jump on that. Uh, last year, we were so grateful for the fire department stepping in and helping with their fundraising efforts, we were able to double our money. I think together, we were able to come up with twenty-two hundred dollars for the fireworks. Um, so this year, we thought we've got a faster jump on it than we did last year. You know, we wouldn't have to rely on the fire department so heavily as we did last year, you know, we greatly appreciate your help. The fifty-fifty split pot, we have four thousand tickets that we're selling, so one winner will win two thousand dollars, the committee will keep two thousand. The citywide bingo will be uh begin at three o'clock in the afternoon on that Saturday, March eighteenth. We are going around and asking for donations from area businesses uh to be able to give gifts prizes. That's how we can get around the gambling part. It's, it's, these proceeds will go for a community event. It's, no one is profiting from it, but we can't do money, so we have to do donated items. So we're going around and collecting those up uh to have our gifts and items. So that's all we have right now on the agenda for our upcoming, yes, sir?
So the bingo, they have to pay to play?
So, yes, sir.
But they're just a money amount, okay.
Yes, sir. So they, um, my aunt down in Fauk, they do a lot of fundraising down there for the school system, for the shriners. They purchased a bunch of the old bingo cards from the VFW in Texture, Canada, that went, that could no longer do. So they've got the old timey one with a little slot that you push over to cover, you, you've never played. Your wife, I sure has. Ask, ask a woman. So they're, they're a bingo card, they got a little slot that you push over to cover your number. Uh, and so we're going to rent those from her to see how this first time goes. So far, we've had a lot of uh excitement about it. I mean, people are like, just truly excited. I mean, they don't care what they're playing for. So uh, we may, in the future, we may try to do this maybe once a quarter. Uh, maybe go to the, the paper ones where we get the dopers, you know, um, again, that's probably Lego, you, you don't understand if you've never played. It's just, it's a, a way that we can make money in the future for the committee.
He's a preacher, preachers don't usually play.
Oh.
I know it's.
Uh, so we talked to, we talked to Mayor Booker, um, and we asked for permission to use the uh storm shelter, because that's the largest uh entity, uh, you know, uh facility that we have. Um, we are gonna, we, we, we're advertising to have a few um vendors come in. Again, we charge those vendors uh either a fee or we ask for them to make a donated item to our, our bingo kinda thing. So, and then we are also gonna set up a, a small concession stand like chips and candies and things like that, that the Eva group will make some profit off of. Again, those monies will be used to try to fund that Fourth of July celebration. Um, last year, we were able to get a band, um, we had several bounce houses. Um, so we had, we had quite a bit of an expense last year overall, along with that fireworks show, and so we're hoping to get a jump on that. Cause we would not have been able to pull that off had the fire department not jumped in and helped us with their fundraising efforts also. Right now, that's all we got on our upcoming agenda.
I make a motion, we have to.
Why don't we go with it? Why don't we just go?
Who's taking it?
Shannon's taking it.
Shannon's ready to go.